...put forward by Councillor Bantry to recommend Council approve the 2014-2016 strategic plan in principle, that again is an important word, as a living document with a revision of the numbering system for the strategies. The numbering system really was maybe annoying to some and not to others. The idea was really not the numbering. It was more as to does a strategic plan represent a work we did and the key issues that we had identified. It is not the documents that give you the microscopic detail, it's not meant to be at that level, but it's meant to drive the work of Council towards resolutions at the table and for Council to bring items to the table that I feel would fit within the plan that is designed by Council. So that is the purpose. Marian?
Madam Chair, if I might, one other really critical part of this is that this document will be the guiding document for budget preparation as well. So a lot of things that maybe are more detailed, you will see in the budget and will be implemented that way rather than through detailed items in strategy.
Right. And if I understand the way we're going to work with this document, as we move forward, we will see those items develop and Marian, in her report, in her monthly report, will touch on those items also. So we will be kept abreast of the progress we are making with this and we can hold administration accountable for seeing that document becoming a reality. Okay? So that essentially what I can say regarding that item. Any questions?
Just a question, not related maybe, but moving forward, when we want to suggest amendments, changes, whatever, would it be the appropriate process to bring those up in committee in a whole and make a recommendation to Council?
I think the first thing you would want to do is bring it to administration and allow administration to kind of look at it, if it doesn't change the intent of the plan, if it's for example, the question of definitions, okay, if that was one issue last time that you brought forward. Marian, in her wisdom, put statement to define...
Fabulous statement.
The whole term. So essentially, if you want the rest of the listing to be removed from the document, well, that's not hard to do. That's just delete. If the statement satisfies all what was below there, if that's what you prefer, that will be done. It's not difficult to do. Does that make sense?
No, sorry. Are you implying that it doesn't need to come to Council?
Marian can finish.
It would still come here.
Yeah, it would still come to Council. Any change to the strategic plan would come to Council. Now, if it's an action item that potentially would meet one of the goals or strategies, there's nothing wrong with just bringing that action item as a recommendation to Council. It doesn't have to actually change the strategic plan.
Right.
So it's not a document that you really want to start adding things to or taking away from because it is intended to be very high level. But if there's ideas that come forward, for instance, one of the strategies is the safe and healthy community, right? So a couple of weeks ago, we dealt with me serving on a committee that maybe will help us meet some of those goals. Doesn't have to be in the strategic plan, but it should be approved by Council as a resolution, right? So it really is intended to be a guiding document to say, when you're making a decision, does it meet with our priorities? Does it meet with our values? And is it going to accomplish one of our strategic priorities?
So I would encourage Council to be proactive. If you see an item that you feel would fit under one of the goals that we're trying to achieve, by all means, bring it forward. That's the best way to own the document.
Yeah, and the way to deal with that is through your Council request for decision form that, and that's what the mayor said, to send it to me, then I can get it on the agenda. It's not so that I would vet it, it's so that it can be put on the agenda and any appropriate background information could be provided at that time.
Anything that's provided ahead to administration to help us get better background and to help them do some research is beneficial to us in our decision-making process. Otherwise, we're all there scrambling with what we have in our head and maybe it's not as useful as solid information. Does that work, Monsieur? Okay, thank you. So we have...
Councillor Pivoy?
No, I would just...
We need a motion?
I'll move that we approve the strategic plan, understanding that by its very nature, the strategic plan is a living document, that really is the nature of a strategic plan. So I would just make the motion that we approve the strategic plan as it's been presented by administration.
Okay. The 2014-2016 strategic plan.
With the revision of the numbering system for the...
No, yes, that is being done.
It's been done.
It's been taken care of. Okay? All right. All in favor? Thank you. Approved. Next is the AHS custom clinic response letter. As you saw in your document and as you directed me last time to write a draft letter, I did so. And there are a few tweaking that I will need to add, give you from Mr. Johnson, just two or three little additions in proper wording of primary care, et cetera. So if you could approve this letter with all the information given there in support of our clinicians and practitioners, it would be helpful.
Adding some of the grammatical fixes.
Yeah, there are a few things. Councillor Barfers, you know, English is my second language.
Absolutely.
Never took it in school, learned it by reading newspaper and books, and that's about the way I learned it. So I am glad when somebody picked my error because I'm able to pick theirs too.
That's right.
My second language doesn't look half as good as this.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. All right. So motion to approve this letter to be sent to the AHS. I also would like to know, the county is also interested in that item. Do you want this to be CC'd to the county and to the Minister of Health?
I have no problem with that. I'll add that as an amendment to my motion that we CC a copy to the Italian to...
And there is also, Mayor Barney told me that he also would be interested in receiving a copy.
So we'll add anybody else that would like to have a copy until then.
Make it public, you know, on a way.
Anytime you send any letter to the Minister, it's advisable to send a CC copy to our MIA as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, of course, of course.
So we'll add that one in there as well.
Okay.
And all who need it.
Interested.
It's a very important issue that other small rural communities in Alberta are going to face the same way as we're facing. Is primary care that is delivered by a private clinic is not the same thing as primary care that is delivered by a hospital or by a public clinic? It's not the same story.
No question.
Okay? So all in favor? Thank you. Carrie. Now, the College Committee strategic plan, there was a motion made there to recommend that Council approve the consultant expenditure up to $1,000 with funding to conform economic development and tourism initiative funding. And the reason for this consultant was to develop a strategic plan that will allow all parties involved, all stakeholders, to be able to define the road to success.
I'll make that motion.
Essentially, that's what it is. Councillor Barfers made that motion. Any questions? Seeing none. All in favor? Thank you. Carrie. Gymnastic agreements, as you can see, the agreement is already in place and the agreement is to have a $9,000 annual fee. Am I correct, Jeff? $9,000 annual fee for the rental of the spaces as outlined in the contract designed by administration and approved by the gymnastics club. So any discussion?
Just remind me again how many years that was again?
It was for eight years and for the next three years.
The next three, yeah.
With opt-out clauses.
Yes.
Each party has an opt-out.
All in favor?
I'll make the motion.
Sorry. Who has not made a motion today? Councillor Edmond? Come on. Councillor Edmond has not made a motion, so here's one for you. All in favor? Thank you. All right. The next one is a little bit of a hiccup that came to administration.
It was caused by administration.
Well, I was trying to try.
It was caused by the administration.
All right, Marian takes full responsibility for the problem of the garbage rate by law 1623A. So here is a motion that had put forward, but if somebody could read that motion, I'd be glad to see it. Councillor Pivoy, would you like to do that? Go ahead.
All right. I move that we recommend, or we don't recommend, I move...
First reading. You move first reading.
First reading. Refund the excess garbage rates paid between January 1st, 2014 and April 30th, 2014, and proceed to a...
Two motions.
Yeah, let's do two motions on this one.
We have first reading.
Period.
So first reading is a separate...
On the bylaw.
On the bylaw.
Oh, just moving that we do a first reading?
Yes. You need to give me a motion to have first reading for by law 1623A.
I move that we have a first reading for by law 1623A.
All in favor? Thank you. If you want to do the second, Councillor Pivoy, go ahead.
Okay, that was...
Now you want to read the...
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, I will move that...
Council?
Council refund the excess garbage rates paid between January 1st, 2014 and April 30th, 2014.
No, April 1st.
April.
March 31st.
The bylaws to take...
I'm sorry, I'm reading from...
We have that, that's a mistake in the background.
Can administration give us the exact date, please?
Yes, April 1st is the date that the bylaws, new bylaws to come into effect after first...
So we should say March 31st.
March 31st. March 31st, okay. Between January 1st and March 31st?
Yep.
Is that correct?
Oh, yes, I see what's the problem.
Okay. And to Edmond, old public hearings for by law. That will be automatic though.
The public hearing will be coming up...
It's already advertised for March 25th.
That's our next council meeting.
March 25th will be the public hearing and we can then pass second and third. Okay? All in favor? Thank you. All right. Now, the summer employment positions, as you can see, the town has set aside in the budget employment for 19 young people this summer. That's already in the budget that we passed. What they need is approval for those 19 positions, yes.
So just so I'm clear, as I read through this, I'm assuming that somehow the lifeguards, are we having more lifeguards because of the new pool or is it similar?
From Lajur?
No, no, yeah, I know about the, I'm saying more than we've had this year. So it's the same. Okay, that's all I need to know because we didn't have that number, so.
Yeah, exactly, Councillor Pivoy, I looked at that too and you're correct. The amount, well, somebody here is correct. It's the same amount as last year, but last year was not recorded. Okay? The only thing that you can see...
Same as two years ago.
Two years.
Essentially, we save money every year the pool is closed.
That's right.
Exactly.
Not supposed to say that.
I know.
Would you like me to delay construction?
Okay. The difference that you will see in numbers from 13 to 19, of course, has something to do with a pool, but it also has to do with the tourism counselors and interpreters. If you remember, we have, we don't have a contract in place, that will deal with that. My question to administration was, who will deal with the car home?
We have two museum interpreters still on the...
So that will deal with that?
That's their position.
Okay.
What they'll be doing between the museum here and the department?
That's right.
Which they did in the past, so that won't change anything. All right. So any other questions?
Yeah. Why the difference in park staff?
We've just removed, if you look, summer parks, playground and sport field and weed control beautification. We eliminated those two headings and just put them all under parks.
They're all incorporated.
It makes more sense to have them under parks.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Any more questions? Seeing none. We have a motion on the table that was...
I don't think we made a motion yet.
I guess I have Parks and Rec, so maybe I should make that motion.
All right, please do so.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we hire the summer staff as outlined on this recommendation sheet.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Well, we're done pretty good. Now, under eight, financial report, as you can see, there is a financial report for January, the month of January. We do not yet have the budget to actual for the 2013 final report that will come when the assess, the auditor will come and report next month.
Yeah, for us to...
Next month?
For us to report, the December 31st is premature because of all the changes that take place over years. There's scheduled to be here April 22nd, I believe, is the council date, the second council meeting in April.
April 22nd, okay.
To present the audit and they will present the audit to, or the draft financial statements to the audit committee the week prior to that.
Okay, so April 15th...
I think the 15th was at the date you...
So that is for Councillor Edmond and Councillor Bantry.
Councillor Pivoy.
Thank you. So you will have that. Okay. We need a motion to approve those financial statement.
Will we accept the financial statement?
Okay. Any questions for administration? No. All in favor? Thank you. Now, under nine, you will see committee and other reports. Marian, maybe you can help me a little bit if I find it there. Under Jeff Shaw, Marian Carlson, and towards the end of the document, it says investigate fluoride further. Justin's group is scheduled to present on February 25th. I think you would want to call it complete.
Well, we still have others that will present.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So you're looking at it as the issue of fluoride of...
Do you know when that's going to happen?
We've...
I'm hoping any day here for one of them, yeah.
We've been in contact with a couple of other individuals that haven't produced anything at this point, so we anticipate that by, maybe not the next meeting, but the meeting after, there will be some additional information. One of the discussions that Jeff and I have had, and now is maybe a good time to bring this up with our council, is would you like us to send something officially to Cardston County as we serve some of their residents and let them know that this is being discussed and if they have an opinion or a position or want to be involved in the discussion?
Well, I think it would kind of make sense if they receive the same order as we do, maybe they should have a say in the matter.
Yeah, I didn't want to send anything officially until I sort of addressed it.
I think it wouldn't be a bad thing, so.
It was unofficially discussed.
Yeah.
But yeah, they, unofficial letter would be good.
I think it would be kind of make sense. Councillor Pivoy?
Question, because the, I mean, it's not the county directly, but it's residents of the county that receive some of the town water. I'm wondering if the same courtesy needs to go up to our town residents that we're discussing and I'm just, is this something that needs to be put out for the public to know that Council is discussing this or is our coverage on Channel 32 and through the paper sufficient?
That's the million-dollar question.
And we also have all those people on the reserve that are receiving the water too. I mean, that's opening a very wide, broad scope.
So if we send something to the county and the blood tribe as well?
I think we should.
And then, you know, I guess if you'd like, we can put something out that Council's currently discussing fluoride and people are invited to participate in that discussion or something.
On that note, I know Ms. Scott, who, Mrs. Scott has been putting this whole, you know, kind of initiative together, she was very concerned that the timing of our decision to make it very public would happen between her experts presenting to us and between the Alberta Health experts so that their voice would get a lot of attention and the earlier reports would be not really reviewed.
Okay. Can I maybe address this issue? I really think that what we should have maybe at the town level is to make it clear that we have the whole package of information that was given to us that could be available for review by any citizen that want to get it from the office and can get either side of the discussion. I really personally don't kind of view the impact the same way because I think we have an excellent presentation there, we have excellent documentation, but I think what we have to do is make it available to people. If they come to the office, want to get a copy of what we have, fair enough.
Yeah, and in my suggestion there, I wasn't saying that we shouldn't publicize it, I was just saying that...
No, I just have what to say.
The fear was that it would become public at an inopportune moment for, you know, both sides to get equal hearing. So what she had said, and I think we all got the letter, right, so this is just what the letter we read as council here, is that if they come and present, she'd like an opportunity to, you know, rebut basically.
You know what? I don't want to have, I look at our correspondence here and we've got letters that are giving us the same information from three different, three different people writing the same letter, giving us the same copy of the letter that went to the Leffbridge City Council. I, I mean, I don't want to sit here and have rebuttal after rebuttal after rebuttal.
Councillor Pivoy, maybe what we should suggest to Mrs. Scott is that after we had our presentation, it would be fair enough for her to put an article in a paper if she feels like her point of view needs to be addressed again from her point of view. That is probably the best place to do it and to have it on Channel 32.
It could be in their part, in their discussion group.
And to be honest, their presentation and even more detail in the letter that was given to us here does all the rebuttal all the way through it already. They take an AHS's position and they rebutted each point all the way through.
That makes no difference.
Maybe it is, so I mean, I just don't see it as being...
Yeah. What I really think, we have to be as impartial as we can regardless of our own personal partiality and at this time, they had plenty of opportunity to present their point of view. Let's give the other side a chance to present their point of view. Doesn't mean that is the one that we prefer, but let's hear it.
Well, what is just what I'm hearing is that that's the one we're going to invite everyone to come and attend. Ultimately, that's what will happen is the minute we publicize it, this room will fill up and they'll only hear the one side.
Okay. I understand what you're trying to say.
We'll be here publicly.
You worry that if we invite people from the county and that we fill the room when the other room was not filled, but they had the opportunity to, right? But I see, you don't want us to...
Well, no, all I'm saying is, yeah, because initially when we were saying, hey, we're just looking for information, we didn't publicize it to the people, we didn't give them an opportunity to appear.
All right, fair enough.
But now we're doing that, right? That's all I'm saying.
Okay, well, if you want, then, well, tell me how you want us to see it.
So one way around it, and you know, maybe Marian has a solution to this, we could vote right now, remove it, keep it, and then we could have Alberta Health talk us into either changing our view or going with it, right? And then that would be, you know...
Personally, well, it's maybe one solution, but to me, it's not the right...
No, no, I'm not saying we should do that, I'm just saying that's an option.
Can the administration have a chance, please?
I was just going to suggest maybe what we can do is we will see if we can get Alberta Health and the dentists to present on March 25th and then we can put out to the public look, we've had presentations from both sides, we're looking for some additional feedback.
That addresses that issue nicely.
Yeah.
That would solve that problem.
We'll see if we can arrange that for the...
We could hold off for two weeks.
Yeah, well, let's not, let's not rush. It's an important decision.
My question is, have you had a response back at all from the other side saying that they're going to present?
Yes.
So they are going to?
Yeah. It was just the individual just hadn't arranged it at that point.
Ah, gotcha.
Okay. All right, so that is the situation here. Under 10 questions, I have a question for Council that has not been dealt with from one of the committees.
What number?
Just a question, just...
You don't have it here.
Oh, okay.
It's a question. My question comes from the Power Committee and it was Councillor Bantry that had put a recommendation to Council and it didn't come to Council. Regarding the use of Lions Park, we need to have approval from this Council that they support the use of Lions Park to hold the power.
Oh, absolutely.
The way, okay, let me tell you a little bit of the background. This issue has come back and forth because of Lions Park being also a park used by the school. And of course, we don't want to upset the apple cap, but we also feel that we want to have the possibility of having a tourist attraction and this year, more than ever since the blood tribe has given us the money upfront to be able to do a decent job at doing it, a tourist attraction, by publicizing it right, right up to Leffbridge South. So we had Chair David Innes go and talk with administration and to address that with their own staff on Parks and Recs and administration can give us their take, which is using of the Lions Park...
We didn't directly discuss with our Parks and Recreation staff, but in the past, we haven't seen a substantial impact from the use there.
Or so negative impact?
Right, exactly.
It's a ground issue.
It does beat down the grass a little bit. I know they'd like to move a little further infield this year because the drums on the, obviously on the track doesn't work really well, but being early August, I think it's fine to, we'll just have to discuss it with the football.
All right.
It's more an issue than...
As a football parent, I know that it is an issue that comes up every time there's actually almost anything on there because it does create some dead spots there. When they did it last time...
Ball practice, right? In the middle of the field?
Not for that. So the last time when they did it was fantastic down at the other end where it didn't have any impact at all on there.
Okay.
If that's possible, that would be great.
Yeah.
That was the intent.
Councillor Barfers, if I hear you, is the exact location of where the dancers and drummers will be located that is the strategic issue that we need to add?
Yeah, I don't know specifically what it is that creates the dead spots, but there were some...
But I'm sure that many cliffs on the ground really hops across to...
It does in areas.
Maybe we can have the natural, you guys please.
So are you saying you're going to have it at the south end?
That's what they held in last time, they'll have it at the south end.
Councillor Pivoy?
No, I was just going to say, you know, the other issue to be sensitive to is that there are multiple residents in the area who every year ask us to find a new location for it, they don't want Lions Park, it's too close to residential. There are a few, just a few complaints that I understand that we get. There are a few, just a few complaints that I understand that we get about that, but-
Generally, one.
It's a one day, it's a one day event, doesn't stretch into the second day. The fear is that it'll go late into the night because it's only the one day. And I understand usually it goes till eleven, if, you know, it's like, it's a longer activity.
Yeah, if you don't like the sound of drums, definitely can be an issue.
It's one day.
It's not an easy thing to resolve, to tell you the truth. And so I think that maybe-
And it's an issue on every major event that's open.
We have to maybe bear the problem. Okay? So we need a motion to accept Lions Park for the power.
I will make that motion.
Please do so. So it's a motion to recommend the use of Lions Park for the power for 2014. All in favor? Thank you.
Should we send the complaints to the other workers?
All right. Now, let's try to go through that. We don't have, we want to try to, try to adjourn within the next ten minutes, okay? We only have to deal now with correspondence. As you can see, there are many letters from Jim Beck via Justin Scott about fluoride, Mark Benson regarding fluoride, Sean Fife regarding fluoride, Justin Scott, fluoride and the effect on our health. Sheila Clare was also on fluoride, Michael Neeson, fluoride, Sunny Box wrote on fluoride. So all those are dealing with this.
And I just wanted to point out, you know, for anybody watching this on Channel 32, all in favor of removing fluoride.
Yes, correct, all in favor.
We have received a single letter asking us to keep it as well. At least we as a council have them.
So Jim Beck was a scientific approach, maybe the most scientific approach of all. And the rest are personal feeling and a documentation given. City of Edmonton Mayor Don Iverson has an invitation regarding a carbon footprint conference. I will not go to that conference, so expensive to go there for that purpose. Not that I don't support reduction of-
That's what I was looking for, for a price.
Four hundred ninety-nine.
That's the conference plus travel plus-
A thousand bucks a head.
A little bit more than that. Municipal Affairs, there are two- Oh, sorry. No. Daniel Smith regarding the ten-ten infrastructure plan. Now here, there is a request from the Walrus Party to our municipality to address the funding formula and to support it or to give our, well, of the best worth of information regarding this item. Here is my concern. I think the letter of support that we should send back is that any plan that creates a long-term sustainability for a municipality will be a good plan.
And with our-
Any plan that looks at sustainability, a long-term sustainability, will be better than what we have.
Yeah, for sure.
So that in principle, I think it's a letter of support we should give back.
I would agree.
But as to the detail, the dollar amount, et cetera, there are so many unknowns that it's very difficult to say, well, yeah, by the way, we support this with this amount of dollars. It's too, too hard for council who does not have the amount of grants, the potential grants for the future to address that in a factual manner. But what we can do is support the principle.
I would like to point out that what impressed me about that letter was that it was actually a letter that was written to us with our numbers and it wasn't just a straight form letter.
Just for clarification as well, a letter, and it was missed in the background, a letter came to each of you individually, but we just put the one address to the mayor in the package because it's appropriate. It'd be discussed at this table rather than individually.
So I would like to see, is there support around this table to write a letter in the principle?
Absolutely.
To support the principle of sustainability, long-term sustainability. Okay? So this is our recommendation to administration to send a letter back regarding this item. We don't need a motion.
All in motion.
Would you like a motion?
And can I add?
Would you like to do the-
Can I add, I think that Emily Bigman is very sensitive to, you know, what is being asked for here and what specifically they're looking for from us. I would add to it maybe that we advise administration to council with Councilor Bigman or, you know, Emily Bigman and just confirm that what we offer is what they're asking for. Does that make sense? Get a little feedback.
What the letter is asking for is a recommendation on the specifics of the plan.
We can't do it.
I don't think we can do that because, do you know where our grants break down? Where, and that letter even doesn't tell us because they don't know where the individual partnerships or grants break down.
And Councilor Bigman did not have that information from our council.
Right, oh yeah, I guess what I'm asking is just that we check with him to see if what we're doing is even worth doing. Does that make sense? What we're going to do, if it'll help or hurt.
Okay. Do you want to, Councilor Pivoy, please go ahead.
Well, I think our mayor has very clearly enunciated what we want to do. Is, you know, it's not, it's not a political thing particularly, but we just want to make the statement, any plan that will give us sustainable funding is what we want, whether it comes from one party or the other, whoever's in government. And I think that's just the message we want to get out. And so to write a letter saying, yes, we support any plan that gives us sustainable long-term funding, especially if there's no strings attached. That's what we, that's what we want.
I believe that you read, you read what I said. Okay, so why don't you make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Should we do that?
Okay. Okay. So the motion is to send a letter back to the Walrus Party to, in support of a long-term sustainability, funding for municipalities.
And are we going to CC that to the minister?
We CC it to all the MLA, the MLA in our thing, absolutely. And that will go also to the minister.
Does that grab it?
Okay, so I'm sending it to who now?
To the Walrus Party, Daniel Smith, to the MLA and to the Minister of Municipal Affairs. Okay. Thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, the rest addresses comes from Municipal Affairs. Minister can use one regarding training for safety codes.
That's the grant.
Just the grant. Congratulations, got the grant.
Is that, has it been a tradition to send a thank you letter from council regarding the grants that the, we could really make, that, you know, you don't want to send that?
We go to a lot of work to get those grants and get them repaired. I don't think we should thank them. They should thank us for doing the work. Meaning it's sorry. It's just my opinion.
That's your opinion. I like to say thank you to what I get given and I work very hard.
Say thanks to.
It's a thirteen hundred dollar grant.
If you want me to send the thank you when we get a grant.
Well, we-
Do we do a bigger thank you for two hundred thousand, thirteen hundred?
Okay, let's do it.
Let's move on, please.
Let's move on. Okay. Electronic Recycling Association?
There were actually two letters that the minister used.
Yeah, one was this-
Well, wondering doing to Afghanistan and on the-
The flag tomorrow. I have spoken to Jeff and the flag will be lowered tomorrow at Darn. Oh, go ahead.
According to our policy, that'll require a motion of council because we're not directed to do it.
Somebody?
I'd like the motion.
Councilor Edmentz will put a motion forward that the flag be lowered tomorrow at Darn and-
At the request of the provincial authorities.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And it'll go right up to noon and is to honor the lost life of one hundred and twelve soldiers in the Afghanistan conflict.
And marks the end of our military mission.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's unfortunate that the cost of life was so great. The last item, electronic, oh, all in favor? Thank you. Almost forgot that one. Electronic Recycling Association, just for your information. It's in Calgary, they want us to show what they're doing. They're trying to give all recycling, recycled laptop to people who are experiencing poverty. The town has a laptop for the past six years. By the time they recycle them, they'll be worth nothing. So we recycle them locally with our recycling group.
Just wondering if our handicapped association would be interested in having a copy of that, oh, letter just so that they know.
That there is a note left?
That there, yeah. I don't know what context they have. They might be interested in at least knowing about this.
Okay. Administration will make a note of this.
Motion to the flag.
Are there confidential items that I can see? So I need one last motion.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Baffers, I know you so it, your family is waiting for you.
My family is waiting for me. And I don't know what for.
I want you to take up for supper.
That's what it is.
Looking very hungry.
It's March and she's having a council meetings to see you.
Do you get the impression, maybe not home as much as I should be?
She's making an appointment with you.